Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Demakia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
First, welcome. Thank you all for being here in a very critical time in our public education as we all know it. There have been some developments as we will discuss as a board as of recently. But before we do that, I know there are a few people here in the room that we would like to have come up and speak under the recognition of visitors. The first one we'd like to have come up is Mr. Cassinich. As I know that Ms. Lewis is also here to speak, and I'm not sure if a representative from Ms. Sutton's office is here. Mr. Cassinich? (applause)
Mr. President and members of the Lorraine Board of Education. I want to thank you for your invitation to appear before you this afternoon. I responded immediately to your request for assistance because I fully understand your commitment to public education, to the children, to the parents, to the teachers, the staff, and all of those who are dedicated to providing educational opportunities for Lorraine's children. I noted with concern the lack of responsiveness on the part of the CEO of the Academic Distress Commission created by HB70. You, as members of the board and as citizens of Ohio, are entitled by law to the information which you requested of the CEO. House Bill 70 was an anti-democratic bill. Officials appointed pursuant to it have often acted abusively and arrogantly in their interactions with elected school board officials and with teachers. When you read the language of HB70, it is clear that it was written with the intention of defeating the rights of teachers to organize and to bargain collectively. My presence here this afternoon is to support the Lorraine Board of Education in its efforts to assert its right to represent the interests of the children of the district. I present to you herewith the following steps, which I believe will be instrumental in helping the people of Lorraine reclaim their right to have an elected school board act on their behalf. My first recommendation, number one. Article 6, Section 3 of the Ohio Constitution relates to public school system boards of education. It reads as follows, and I quote: "Provision shall be made by law for the organization, administration, and control of the public school system of the state supported by public funds, provided that each school district embraced wholly or in part within any city shall have the power by referendum vote to determine for itself the number of members and the organization of the district board of education. And provision shall be made by law for the exercise of this power by such school districts." End quote. House Bill 70 allows for a referendum, but not until six years after the change is made. Members of the board, this is not consistent with the intention of the framers of the Ohio Constitution. I think that this provision is open to legal challenge, and I would invite the board to explore the potential of legal action to reclaim your right to organize the district board of education. So my first recommendation then is to consider taking legal action as a board, or for that matter, any individual could do that, to challenge that provision of House Bill 70. The second recommendation I have is this. Article 1 of the Ohio Constitution, that's, excuse me, that's Article 2. Article 2 of the Ohio Constitution, Section 38. Enabled laws to be created, providing for the, quote, "prompt removal from office upon complaint and hearing of all officers." End quote. House Bill 70 invests the CEO of any academic distress commission with such broad powers as to easily qualify him or her as a public officer. The Ohio Revised Code, Section 3.07 relates to misconduct in office and specifies reasons for removal of officers, including misfeasance, malfeasance, and non-feasance. Section 3.08 of the Ohio Revised Code provides for the procedures to remove public officers. Here is how it's done, and this is language right from the Ohio Revised Code. Quote, "A written or printed complaint specifically setting forth the charge," unquote, must be produced. Next, those charges have to be submitted in the form of a petition. The petition must be signed by no less than 15% of the number of voters who cast ballots in the last governor's race. Since 11,609 votes were cast in the city of Lorraine in the 2014 general election for governor, at least 1,741 voters, 1,741 voters in the city of Lorraine must sign the petition. The petition then has, it must be filed with the Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas. The court has 30 days to hear the complaint. A judge will decide whether removal of the CEO, based on the charges, should occur unless the CEO requests a jury trial. This section of the Ohio Revised Code makes it clear that the members of the board and the people of Lorraine have a constitutional and legal recourse in dealing with an appointed school CEO who is unaccountable, secretive, and unresponsive, acting as though he is beyond the reach of public concern. Members of the board, I submit these two potential courses of action for your consideration. Number one, that you can proceed with court action challenging the provisions of HB70 that effectively remove certain powers from the board, which by constitutional right you have a right to exercise. And number two, that given the status of the CEO, this board, and for that matter, people in Lorraine, have the ability and the right to be able to file charges against the CEO, put them in the form of a petition, get the requisite signatures, and submit it to the Court of Common Pleas of Lorraine County for a decision. So I submit these two courses of action for your consideration. I applaud your willingness to fight back, to reclaim the democratic rights of this elected school board, to be of service to the people of Lorraine in the interest of the education of the children of this community. Thank you very much, and I certainly would welcome any questions or stand to hear any comments that you may have. (applause)
Thank you.
To the board, I just think this is...
I'm sorry?
No, I said to the board, I just, I guess he's revealed some things that I was not aware of. And, um, thank you for that. I guess we'll have to discuss this as a board among ourselves to see exactly where we come from here.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I think some things have been revealed that I was not aware of. And I guess as a board, we've got some things to talk about, to discuss, to see what our possible plan of action could be.
Do they have any questions for Mr. Cassinich?
Just thank you for coming, taking the time to pay attention to what's happening. And, um, thank you for your recommendations and considerations.
I can't hear you.
I have a question right here.
I just said thank you for your taking the time and consideration to pay attention to what's happening in Lorraine. And we appreciate your response to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My question is, if you can start these procedures, what's the timeframe that we're looking for?
There is no timeframe. The timeframe depends on the urgency that you feel on this matter. If a petition is created and circulated as soon as you present it to the court, the court has 30 days to act. So it really is up to you. And it's up to the sense of urgency that you communicated. You could really start that at any time the board deems that it wants to. That's really entirely up to you. I just present it as some options that you have. And they are grounded in law and the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
I do have one question. That action that we're speaking of, that could be executed by the board or by the citizenship, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, you know, anyone can file, or can circulate such petition. But the thing that I would like to respectfully advise you on is that is that the charges that would be submitted in the petition have to be quite specific. And they're going to have to be, they're going to have to hold up in court. Now, I noticed that the board's inability to receive information from the CEO, despite you making many Freedom of Information, Open Records requests. You know, that could be one of the charges that could be submitted. But I would ask you to very carefully consider among yourselves, based on the facts, what those charges ought to be in such a petition if you decide to go forward. Because keep in mind, that's what a judge or jury will decide, make their decision on. So that's why, you know, it's a very serious step. But understanding the difficulties this board has had and its appeal to me personally, I decided to come here and present you with those options. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a question right here.
With option A, you said they could get a lawyer. Who would pay for that, or who would pay for those charges?
You know, that, if I may, Mr. President. If the board, there's a number of different possibilities. Given House Bill 70, I'm not aware of what discretion at this point the board would have to be able to hire its own attorney. However, if you cannot do that, that doesn't stop any citizen from going forward with legal action. And I'm sure that there are a number of attorneys who would be, who are public spirited enough to be willing to represent this cause. But I would not, I would, though, first recommend to the board that through your own determination, whether or not this is something that you would like to pursue, and even if the board attorney did not do that, the board could still, if a suit was filed, the board could still file an amicus brief in support of the action that was taken by a private citizen, for that matter.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I would also add that by law, our city law director also represents the school district and this board of education as well, so that may also be an option.
So that's for your consideration, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would this action, legal action, be against House Bill 70 or primarily the CEO?
Well, there's two different points here, ma'am. And I offer two possibilities for the board. One is to challenge the constitutionality of the provisions of House Bill 70 that essentially take power, take the referendum power away from the school boards. The second one deals specifically with the path towards removing a public officer. And I might say that it may not be with precedent to use this section, but it is on the statutes. It's Section 3.07 of the Ohio Revised Code and 3.08 inclusive. And so, and again, a plain reading of House Bill 70 with the power that was invested in the CEO clearly puts him within the reach of the definition of a public officer. There is no question about it. He actually has greater powers than many public officials. So that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause) I'd also like to recognize Chantel Lewis, who is here on behalf of Bill O'Neill.
Good afternoon. Let me just say, colleagues. I am a former school board member, and I'm also an employee of Lorraine City Schools. And I'm not here to pander for your vote. I'm here in support. I have my former colleagues from East Cleveland, who's on the school board, who wasn't a school board with me, and also other people who are superintendents in Cleveland. Here's the issue. The issue is not about one individual. I'm not here about one individual. I am here in reference to House Bill 70 that took effect in October 2015. House Bill 70 is not only affecting Lorraine City Schools and Youngstown City Schools, it's also going to affect East Cleveland City Schools and also Warrensville City Schools. So we have to be in uniform in reference to defeating the bill. Unlike Mr. Cassinich, we're not here talking about malfeasance or gross negligence in office. We're, because we can go to the Treasury to do public records requests. We're simply here to get rid of a symptom of a problem. And the problem is House Bill 70. So it's just like this. It's like going to the doctor. And I have a call for one, for a week. Would you trust a teacher to do it? No, because that's all of our certification. House Bill 70 is in the realms of education. Now, the governor, Governor Kasich, has 25 members on his cabinet. 25. And one deals with the youth, to put the youth in prison. Not one dealing with education. There's a symptom of a sickness here. And we have to deal with that. We have Merrill Johnson from the State School Board, who's also was in Cleveland, when Cleveland passed the House Bill 525. We have to address what is needed. Now, we can talk about taking, going to court, because I know Tony Giardini, a great lawyer, I know he went through all this.
(laughing) Amen.
So, let's talk about the real issues. Let's talk about my colleague, William O'Neill, who served as Supreme Court Justice and who dealt with fighting on a derived case for 20 years in reference to the funding. We do not have adequate funding here in the state of Ohio, so we have to address that. We have to put someone down in the state who knows education. Because if we do not do that, we're going to continue on with the same cycle. I, and I'm going to say colleagues in this sense, because I was on the school board, vice president of East Cleveland School Board for four years, am I right, Adam? Four years, and also served on the commission. And it's not fair that the citizens vote you in and someone has power over you.
(laughing) Bet you you're doing a job.
But, here's the thing. You can do, but you voted people in, Ms. Rice. The issue is, we have to take back our schools. I agree with you, Mr. Williams. It's not going to take effect, if we talk about urban education at this point. Now, the rural education comes into effect, because they will, and go to House Bill 70, then that's when people are going to start talking. So, we have to address, one, talking about having an educator on the cabinet. We have to. Two, we can file all the lawsuits, but we're going round and round and round in the circle. And we're not going to get anywhere with that circle. So it's good to know that we have people who are running who has the lack of knowledge of education and pander in the crowd for their vote, and we're not getting anyone here to serve down them. Let's talk about people who are running, let's talk about committees, let's talk about joining. Let's talk about voting people out who is passing legislation in reference to education. We have to do that. As I conclude, if we do not deal with those issues in addressing and pushing our message, then we're going to continue on with that same cycle. Thank you, and I hope I may be Bill O'Neill proud with that. And Betty, I'm going to have you come on up. So thank you very much, Chantel, if I may.
I have a question for you. You're talking about continuing the cycle, and it starts in Columbus?
It starts in Columbus. It's October...
I beg to differ with you. It starts in the city.
Okay.
That's where it starts. My daughter teaches in East Cleveland School.
Okay.
And every day, I hear questions, I read stories about kids not coming to school, kids jumping on teachers, kids being very disrespectful. That's your problem. I don't care who you put in Columbus, or how, where they are first on education, until you address the problems in the city, nothing's going well.
You know what, I can agree with you too, because I come from East Cleveland, Ohio. But one thing I can say, we can always point the finger and blame someone. We need to put our hands on children and try to raise those children. We need different mentoring programs for those children. We need wraparound services for those children. My colleagues in this room, we're tired. We're doing 12, 13, 14, 15 hours a day. So, so, so here's my thing. This is what I'm saying to you. 20 years ago, we're in the school systems with, well, it's a case called The Rock, it was deemed unconstitutional. And the governor, we have like, how many governors passed that, maybe five or six governors, didn't address that, they didn't touch that. We have to start there. It's not fair that Lorraine City Schools is getting this amount of money per student, and we're going to talk about Amherst probably getting more. It's not fair. So we need many, many people to come, I'm just going to say this, I'm going to go back to your comment. It takes a village to raise a child. And we can't sit here and keep pointing about the child. We need to put, like I said, put our hands on that child.
That's the reason I'm saying like, Columbus is not going to help.
But Columbus can, though. I'm saying, we can help Columbus to make that decision.
Unless you are in mass when you do that, it's not going to happen. You're going to have politics, politics...
But here's the thing. We're here right now. We're here right now. We can make a mass, we can walk, I'm not going to literally walk to Columbus right now. But we can go down to Columbus right now. So October 15, 2015, when this law was passed, we need to have those masses. But that's the, that's here and now. Right now, we can, we have a lot of people who are sitting on the education committee, who are up for votes right now, and we're not doing nothing to tell them, hey, we're going to stop this.
Oh, yes.
Yes, voting is key. And this starts right here in this room. Yes, sir.
You say that this law passed in 2015.
Yes, sir.
Why has it taken so long for it to become an issue?
Right.
And my point, I want to make this point. Couple of weeks ago, I stood in Columbus along with some other people here. When we were down there to protest a bill that our law is going before the US Supreme Court, Davis versus Aspey. All right? And we were taking that action prior to that case being heard, the following Monday. Why has it taken a couple of years at least before it's now suddenly becoming an issue? Is it because of the politics of governors we're surrounding, or why? I don't know.
You know what, here's the issue. Youngstown City Schools filed a lawsuit against the state. They were turned down, my correct, Tom, Jay? Okay? So they were turned down. And we're steadily fighting because, one thing, not only are we having the school board members from Lorraine and Youngstown fighting, we have other school systems who are coming aboard. So my thing is, we need, like the guy I said here, we need to continue on pushing with mass of people. It's an election year, big for everyone. Let's elect those, let's get rid of those people. And to make those changes. I'm not up here just, because I've worked as a principal along with our school. I work very hard, I can say. But at this point, I'm here to say, we got to change our system. It's a sick system. And if we continue on perpetuating that particular problem, we're not going to go anywhere. So we need to gather together for House Bill 70 and say, hey, we're done with that. Let's vote people out, that's what I'm saying.
I certainly agree with you. However, I still go back to the issue. Why does it take a couple of years for, in this case, the people to wake up and realize we're giving stuff to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Why does it take people that long to wake it up?
People don't get touched up.
Yeah. And people pander your, pander you and not, they pander... Let me, let me try to form this word. They pander for you not knowing.
Yeah. You said the word.
Yes, Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done. I'm done. Yes, it is.
Right. The other way is kind of...
This is the thing. Yeah, and I agree with you. Here's the thing. My suggestion is this. One, we have to put an educator on the cabinet. Because at this point, House Bill 70, we can't do anything about it right now. I'm going to be honest with you. We cannot do anything about it. We have to put an educator, like I just gave you an example, on a cabinet in order to make some progress. No, they can't do anything about it right now, no. That's honest.
Ms. Lewis, if you try to rank this back in...
I'm done. Thank you, thank you.
And if we could, we will have a hearing of the public for anybody that has any questions or comments. And certainly, we don't want to turn it into a debate. But, again, the whole point of this meeting, number one, is, you know, our community needs to be educated on how House Bill 70 is doing to public education. It is a blatant attack on public education, and as a local board of education and elected officials, they, one law has single-handedly stripped the local power from this community, Youngstown community, and soon to be about 13 others coming down the pipeline. So, again, we're really trying to focus on what we can do to make sure that House Bill 70 doesn't devastate all public education and privatize our education system. But again, moving forward, and I know we have probably a few more people that want to speak, there will be a hearing of the public that you certainly can, you know, put in your comments or ask any questions. And, again, if we don't have the answers here, we'll be happy to get those answers to you. But with that being said, I also like to recognize Betty Sutton, who is also here. Again, we thank all of you for being here. (applause)
I hear that, all these politicians. I am honored to be here. It's not my first trip to Lorraine. I had the privilege to serve this community for three terms in Congress. I care about this community. I'm here because I care about the people. I care about the kids. I care about the education and the empowerment they get in our schools. And so I come today to talk a little bit about House Bill 70. Unfortunately, the path that has been chosen by those who have been in charge, and I've been listening to the questions a lot, and I hope that I'll be able to address some of them along the way. But the path that has been chosen by the Republicans who have controlled things... But the path that has been chosen, um, by the Republicans who have controlled things. You ask, how come we don't know about this, how come we don't get in front of this? Well, leadership matters. Leadership matters, and it matters before the fact, and it matters today, because we have to deal with the consequences of what the leaders who have been in charge have chosen to do. And they chose to enact House Bill seventy. And House Bill seventy is a, um, it's a top-down approach. It says, same failed top-down approach that we often see come out of the legislature on different issues. Um, and it is deeply flawed. It's deeply flawed, flawed for several reasons. One, of course, it allows the state to step in and run distressed school systems by appointing a CEO and giving the CEO the power to override collective bargaining agreements. Now, there's a lot that is wrong with that statement, right, with, with that process. And frankly, it's so flawed that it must be changed. And I know that you are here today because you care, because you want things to work for your kids and for your community. This top-down approach, what it does is it silences local voices and local control. And when it was first implemented in Youngstown, uh, the first concern was the lack of transparency from the CEO. And now, we're seeing the same thing happen here in Lorraine, and that is a problem. You don't think it's a problem with lack of transparency? I'm sorry, I did hear. From the CEO? Well, I think that that it's really important that whenever a board goes before the people and asks for a levy to be passed, that we're able to provide them with all the information that is necessary, because when we ask taxpayers to provide for the schools that we should. So, perhaps that isn't the same problem that they have in Youngstown, but I have heard that from some folks. So, that's, that's great, that's good to know, that that isn't happening here. Um, the other issue, it is, okay, so there's a divergence of opinion. Um, there's a divergence of opinion, but here's the bottom line. One thing that everyone in this room agrees with is that we care that our schools are working for our kids, and we want to find a way, and leaders help us find a way. But one of the other things that House Bill seventy does is it imposes restrictions on the rights of educators to collectively bargain. Um, the citizens of Ohio have already said with overwhelming certainty that the right for public employees to collectively bargain must be protected and must be adhered to. House Bill seventy is, in effect, a backdoor attempt to do what the people of this state have resoundedly rejected with Senate Bill Five's defeat in twenty eleven. Now, I am here, like you, as I began these remarks, because I care. I care about making things work. I'm here to voice my opposition, certainly, to the approach that is laid out in House Bill seventy. I am here to call for information to be shared with the community. I am here to fight against that top-down approach, and in favor of the people having control over their schools. And as a former member of Congress representing Lorraine, I know that House Bill seventy is not in the best interest of this great community. This is a community full of deeply concerned citizens represented here tonight that understand and value the rights of our students to obtain the education they deserve, that will allow them not only to just survive, but to thrive in this great straight state of ours. And as a candidate, certainly, for Lieutenant Governor, I want you to know again that leadership matters. And when we have a governor who wants to work in partnership with communities like yours, then we can get different results, because the governor themselves have some capacity to move some of these pieces in a way that will work with and for our communities. So, we've heard a lot in the question and answer period about the, the, the ways that we have gotten here. We've heard a lot about symptoms of something bigger than what brings us here as Lorraine faces this issue front and center. We know that others out there, both in, not, beyond Youngstown, are also in line for coming face to face with what Lorraine is encountering right now. At the end of the day, it does come down to values, it comes down to priorities. And we need to have leadership. And it doesn't matter who becomes the governor. We need to have leadership that is committed to working with our local officials and communities to ensure that the kids in this state, no matter where they are, no matter what their dream, that they will be empowered with the education to take them toward that dream. That's why I'm here, because I care, I wanna hear, and you heard when people had a divergence of opinion, I wanna hear about it. I wanna hear your thoughts and your concerns and your ideas. And then, I want us to take steps together to develop solutions that will work for this community. And with that, I yield back.
Now that we have House Bill seventy, and we have the CEO, now we have the board here, how can we collectively all work together? Because this is what's happening now. So, how do we work so that we are a cohesive group, and we're pointing in the same direction, so we can be the best that we can be for the children that we have? Because that's all that's important.
That's right. It's all, it's all about the well-being of our kids and the education that they get, because we can't afford to wait till another day when they need their education today, right? So, we have to do the best we can while we're, we have to live in the system while we're trying to improve the system. It begins with what you said. It begins staying focused on that very point of common purpose, right? That common purpose of, how do we always, no matter what the divergence of opinion may be, how do we come together on that pinpoint? On that pinpoint of, uh, of fighting for the kind of education that our kids need. Now, I would say, from the role in which I find myself today, right? As somebody who has had the privilege, not only to represent people in this community in office, but also as somebody who represented educators, as an attorney. You know, there is much to improve in the law. And that really is something that's going to take, we can't do overnight like that. But I will tell you, the biggest, the biggest, uh, opportunity does come next fall, when we elect new leaders, because this came through the legislature, someone said, how did this happen? This happened, this happened, there's a very gerrymandered state that we live in. And we have a lot of extreme legislative actions that are happening. And we don't really hear about them, because honestly, it's very one-sided. And it doesn't always represent the collective best interest of our state, or fairly reflect the interests of our state. And so, we have a chance next fall to change that. In the meantime, this kind of meeting, this kind of dialogue is important, because we are all raising a voice of common concern. Um, we are also organizing folks across Ohio. People care about this, whether or not they are in Lorraine, or whether they are in Youngstown. I will be honest, I was in the state legislature, and I fought against the takeover of schools even back in the nineties. So, I am not new to this fight. But the biggest opportunity we have is who we elect in the fall.
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, we've discussed education back for ten years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
I am a product of Youngstown schools. Coming through there, and prior to that, I was the auditorium resident in the Youngstown State University, as you know, prior to coming to Illinois.
Yes.
This is not something that just happened yesterday. Ten, fifteen years ago, when they were talking about privatizing education, establishing charter schools. This, right now, is not totally a local trend, it's a national trend.
Right, right.
And they can say, and Emmy last to me, you got Caesar in the White House, Genghis Khan over across the water, and Attila the Hun sitting in Russia. And they're all, it's a national trend that they're trying to localize institutions. It is not, and I will say, about to meet the CEO, who is in here at this point, who is coming, and who has, and I will honestly stand up and say to you, establish some trends and some things that need to be done in this district. It's about House Bill seventy number one. It's about privatization of the schools. This community is a community, in my coming year, you have four different school districts with the corporate limits, if you talk to the city of Lorraine. Okay? Yet, we're the only ones in the middle who, who have this so-called problem. Not true.
No, not at all.
Okay? It's, that pays for problem, it's systematic, it was set up deliberately for these things to come about that are coming about. And we need to separate the two. Let's separate the CEO and House Bill seventy. Because House Bill seventy has a wider range, and it's far reaching tentacles that are going to come out and bite us in the behind pretty soon.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, I want you to know that I wasn't making a comment about the CEO, if that's what you heard when I said we need transparency, because I think we always need transparency. I don't think anyone disagrees with that. Um, so, so to your point, when I was in the state legislature, I stood up and I warned against the expansion of charter schools way back in the nineteen nineties, and by the way, I was pretty much by myself. Because you could see around the bend where this was headed. So, this comes back to where I began, and that is, are we going to be committed to a system of thorough and efficient schools as required by the Ohio Constitution? And are we going to do this in a way, here's, it's an old trick, it's to your point that you just made. It's an old trick, they say, you know, that school, those schools, they're not performing very well. And then, they make them not perform very well, and then, they say, look, they're not performing very well. That is, that has been going on for a long time in a lot of, a lot of ways. And then, they use it as a justification to take more away. That is a trick, I know that trick. Uh, maybe it's because I have served at different levels of government, and you can see how this happens through the years and through the levels, and who ultimately pays the price? Not only you in this room, but the kids pay the price. And the kids, honestly, they have to come first. Now, you will, I don't wanna get into the whole thing, but you can go on, uh, line in the coming days, we'll be unveiling a whole education plan, because it's bigger, as you say. It's about House Bill seventy, it should not exist. House Bill seventy should not exist. It is a flawed approach. It is a flawed approach. And, and I will, I will share with you that if I have a chance to serve as Lieutenant Governor, and I know Frich Cordray is Governor, we are going to do everything we can to make sure that it no longer stands. And as I said before, leadership matters. Leadership matters, and we haven't seen leadership in this direction, in this state, on these issues in a very long time. Other questions? Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for all of those folks that have come here to speak on House Bill seventy, and, you know, I just want, you know, in, in a lot of the conversations, and I hear all of them, uh, I just wanna be very clear that the Board of Education and Lorraine City Schools has been cooperative with House Bill seventy since its inception, and since we've been a part of it. Uh, we had a, this is the second commission that we've had, uh, in this district. In the first commission, we worked very well with. Uh, we also accomplished some great things, and, uh, designed a, uh, cooperative plan, uh, for this school district. Um, since the second commission, and now CEO, that cooperativeness and partnership, uh, just doesn't exist. And, um, I just wanna be clear that, again, Mr. Ballin and I sat in a couple of different meetings, uh, with the CEO, and it has never been about the CEO, it's not about the CEO. Excuse me, listen, folks. There's a hearing of the public, you guys can come up and have your comments there. It has never been about the CEO, it has always been about House Bill seventy. And there is zero transparency in this district at this current time. I have made several public records requests and received zero information on anything, specifically spending. This board can't even discuss putting a levy out there if we don't even know what they're spending money on. We have had countless firms come into this district in the six months that the CEO's been here, and we could certainly learn a lot from Youngstown. Take a look at what's going on in Youngstown, and what the CEO there is doing and will do. There was an article just released that the CEO clearly stated that they're gonna turn Youngstown into charter schools. And I'm not sure if Youngstown representation is here, uh, but again, we can learn a lot from them, and we will continue to try to communicate with Youngstown and find out, you know, what's going on there. But again, House Bill seventy is an attack on public education, and folks need to pay attention to that. This is a serious bill that is gonna devastate all public education, starting with, again, you look at it, a lot of the urban school districts in the state of Ohio. So, that's what this is really about. And again, I hear a lot of the conversations, and again, I appreciate, uh, all of your comments. Uh, but with that being said-
I'm sorry. I hope it's okay, okay?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Merle Johnson, I'm a member of the State Board of Education, District Eleven. Um, I do not represent this district, but your State Board member, Catherine McGurvy, is no longer on the board, so I felt you needed somebody to, to represent you, so I came to the meeting today. I'm very concerned, uh, what you just said about making public records requests, and they're not being granted, to whom are you making those requests?
I've made them to the CEO, as well as the Attorney General's Office, as well as Ohio Department of Education. And again, uh, since my last one that was made in the beginning of February, I've received zero information.
Okay, well, I have read, and I wanna thank, um, the board member for putting some information on, on, on social media. I really appreciate the information that you put on social media, which keeps all of us informed. I had a conversation with State Superintendent Paulo Di Maria Saturday morning. Um, he calls each board member every month before our meetings. I expressed to him that you were not receiving, uh, financial information, which is making it difficult for you to determine if you're gonna put a levy on the ballot. He said, uh, that it was a public record, and I said, there seems to be a problem with that. Mr. Superintendent Di Maria said for you to call his office, and he wants to hear that from you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
With all that being said, uh, first hearing of the public. Yeah, please, uh, as a hearing of the public, as per policy, uh, each individual has about three minutes to speak or make your comments. Also, please make sure that you say for the record your name and address of your class. And as a side as she here as well. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Patricia Blahobek, and I'm a member of the East Cleveland School Board. We have, uh, four members that I've seen, unless there's the number one hiding somewhere, um, who are here, and we had a meeting just last week to discuss House Bill seventy, which we had addressed actually, uh, about a year and a half or so ago. And we had the Ohio Department of Education coming to us- And we had the Ohio Department of Education coming to us on a regular basis and discussing things and making threats, basically. But, um, so we understand where you're coming from, and we agree, um, one's not supposed to speak for one's board, but we had a meeting last week, and we are unanimously opposed to House Bill seventy. And we're talking about discussing this with our legislators, and, um, our legislators fortunately are opposed to House Bill seventy. I'm not sure who your state senator and state representative are here, um, so I can't speak to that. But the importance of trying to discuss with them the, uh, problems inherent in a situation that takes away control, trying and to talk to them about, um, the differences in achievement of school districts that are in poverty and the school districts that are from more prosperous areas. And it's just a matter of all of us, uh, speaking in a very united way about the problems that, uh, that come with this. And I would like to thank Mr. Ballin for the invitation to come here. I received an email from him in the not-too-far distant past. And I'd also like to, um, say to the gentleman whose daughter teaches in East Cleveland, there are a lot of problems with, with, uh, a lot of support that we need to give to our students and to, to our teachers. And one of the things that I think we need to do is to work on the preschool preparation. For example, there's a program called the Imagination Library. And I don't know if you have connection to that here. But trying to get all of the children connected to the Imagination Library so they can have those free books, and they're more likely to be ready for school. A lot of other things, but, you know, one can't go through the whole list in the amount of time that runs a lot. Um, but I, I agree, there's a lot that needs to be done, and it needs to be done with the children starting at birth, with the parents, um, support for the teachers. I'd like to see more social workers, as a sample.
Because this is the same thing that I heard from our CEO two weeks ago.
Right.
At, uh, Lorraine City Council Chairman, it's that exact same thing. From birth, all the way up.
So, yeah, I did hear that he had said that, and, um, that's something that I am in complete agreement with him. On the other hand, if the school board is requesting information and they're not getting it, that's, that's a problem. So we have a strength in that he's, uh, trying to deal with children from birth, and a weakness that he's not providing the information that is required by law.
There's, there's a website, and I can't remember the link, but it's Lorraine City Schools backslash something. Everything that citizens in Lorraine want to know about what's happening in the Lorraine City Schools is on that link.
Okay, alright. You know, I mean, I just want, if folks got comments, please make sure you come to the mic. You know, I don't want to turn this into a debate or a question and answer session, because I know there's probably a lot of people that do want to speak. So I, I want to make sure you had enough, finished what you needed.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Sure, first I'd like to thank Mr. Ballin, I wouldn't even know about House Bill seventy. That's a retired steelworker. And I'll be the first to say education's the most important thing, and it needs funding. We're always for that. And again, I thank you or I'd be blinded. And then about websites, I agree with you, but as retired steelworkers, most of us don't get on the internet. You know, just the way it is. And these are the ones that are required, probably in this city, to vote for a levy. And if anything's hidden, it's just no good. That's the bottom line. It comes out like we have consultants who seemingly are carpetbaggers, I don't know. Do they have any feeling for the students? That's the bottom line, is education. So, when it comes to everything, the vote, and the vote will be for another levy. We're always for levies, but with this confusion, it's not very good. So I think you can fight, like the one lady, I'm sure we've got to fight Columbus and the orange president and this, I understand that. But, I think there was a recommendation here to file a lawsuit, get one thousand seven hundred forty-one signatures. I think this is where it starts. It's no different when Rosa Parks started with not riding behind the bus. You've got to start somewhere. I'm just saying you have to, if this petition will bring everything to light, I'm for what's ever good for the students. So thank you again, school board, Mr. Ballin, or I'd be blinded by this. Thank you.
Can you say your name for the record? Just for the record.
Jesus.
Dominic Cattelbo. Thank you.
Uh, Bambi Dillon, two-two-eight Delaware Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio, four-four-zero-five-two. Before I start talking, I just want everybody here to remember, it is the kids that count. Everything we say is about the kids. We have to put our personal feelings high and move forward. But with that being said, I took a few notes, because I get emotional about this stuff. Um, I've lived in Lorraine my whole life, and I, I just can't believe what I'm seeing. I've worked on so many levy committees, and I've led them, the treasure of them. And I just can't believe we're at this point now. I, I would hate to see the levy not, you know, not have a levy, because I feel that everything that we've worked for in the past was for naught. So I just want you guys to remember, it is the kids that count. I'm always asked, and I volunteer for a lot of other organizations, and they all know that I'm involved with the schools, and everybody always is asking me about the money being spent by the CEO. Now, I'm going to tell you this, I don't care if the CEO is called Dave, John, Joe, Linda, or whatever. I know it all has to do with the system that's been put in place. Now, I know that it's all has to do about the system put in place. I felt like I was at a political arena.
Right.
And I'm glad that's over with now. Now, we can talk about the city of Lorraine. We have to do now, we can't wait for them to fight House Bill seventy, and we have to do stuff now. I appreciate that they're here explaining more about House Bill seventy, and I surely would like to help them, but it's obvious, they need the help to guide us, that's why we elect politicians. So, if it's been so bad, why is it now so important to fight for it? When they should have started and came to us in two thousand and fifteen to fight for all that? Okay, so now what I'm saying is, everybody's eyes asking me about the money that the CEO is, is spending. And I go to those community business partners meetings. And I think it is good that we're going to try to break down and do in different areas for the children. But I have the same question, how are we going to fund it? Because, let's face it, this is not a real rich area, and we struggle just making ends meet and trying to do the best for our kids. So that is one of my questions. And like I said, I don't care who's there, they're going to have the same authority, the, the CEO, whether it's Dave or whomever. That's where we've got to look at things, you know, they're hiring firms to, um, you know, like, uh, to see where our money's going, they're starting new positions. Okay, that was, that's another pet peeve of mine. I know everybody has a right to live where they want to, but I feel that through the years, we've seen all these administrators come from out of town that are not, they don't know our community the way they should. And that bothers me, and it always has, you could ask them. For fifteen years, I've been complaining about that, because I've been doing this since two thousand and two, and I've dealt with six different superintendents now as CEO. That is ridiculous. So, you know, I feel that we should start maybe grooming our own people. I'm sure we have well-educated, good-hearted, smart people here that could start being groomed up to become great principals, great administrators, instead of always bringing people from outside. And another thing that drives me crazy about bringing the outsiders, they can't vote because they choose not to live in Lorraine. I don't like that. If you're going to come and take the big salary, be here to vote for what you're trying to tell us what our schools should be doing. We have great sections in Lorraine that they could live in. Okay, let's see, I, I want to, like, not ramble. Okay, let's see. Oh, another thing, because of the fact that we have had so many, so much turnovers, I really have no faith in this system. Only because I've worked with so many leaders that I see as a pattern. They come in gung ho, make the teachers change the way they have to teach, uh, and then after the second year, they want to leave. They get their buyout, and they leave Lorraine, Ohio, richer than get out and go, with our taxpayer money. And then the teachers now, and the staff and everybody, has to go to learn another system. So our poor children, our kids, now, in how many years has had to change? How many times have the teachers had to change the ways of doing their teaching?
About six times.
Now, it's hard enough for the adults to accept this, how do you think these young kids are able to do that? Okay, so, let me see here. So to me, I, I have said this for a long time, that I feel the school board, the distress committee, and a CEO should all be working together and not against each other. So that has to get fixed immediately. Not just because of the House Bill seventy, I don't care if it's seventy, eighty, or ninety. I'm concerned about Lorraine, Ohio, and our kids.
Amen.
So, I feel that the governor experimented in Youngstown and is failing, so now he's going to try Lorraine, Ohio. We don't want that to happen, he can go take a hike. So, so charter and non-public education is a big business, and we're about to be taken over by people who want to make money, not educate children. They need our public schools to fail so they can bring in their cronies and private companies. So we must fight this now, Lorraine deserves better than this, because it is the kids that count.
That's right.
So, I guess I'm asking that the board, we've got to, but you, to me, you have to get through your differences somehow. You know, you say you don't get it, people back here says, yes, you do, I don't know. All I know is something has to be done. I don't see what it's going to, you know, like, what it's going to take, because if you don't do a levy, then that's lost income. And we have through the two thousand and nineteen to pass a levy, because in two thousand and nineteen at the end, that's when you lose your money?
January first, twenty twenty.
Okay, and then how much money are you going to lose?
Three point one million.
Three point one, and, and we worked hard, and Bill and Tim, you know that, because you guys alternated representing the school system. It's not easy to get money. And if it's a renewal, it's a lot easier to pass a renewal than to ask for new money. Because the last time, I was very proud that it took us twenty years, but we, we passed a new levy, first new money in twenty years, and we're very proud of that. And now, we don't want to lose that. So, as a friend to all of you, please don't disappoint me. Because I don't know if you guys can look me in the eyes as you do. And then I'm probably going to have to find another ride home tonight. Thanks, sweetie.
Well, my name is Jerry Armstrong, I live in thirty-four-six-eight-seven Plantation Place in North Ridgefield. I'm not running for office, um, but I'm here to, as for the kids, we're having an event here next week at this location, and we're bringing in two employers that are looking to hire high school students. So, I just want to make sure that the people in this room, you must have some influence, to make sure that the high school kids here come to that, come to that affair and get hired. They're coming here to actually do interviews and make job offers. And the employers are going to be Kalahari and Cedar Point. So, I don't want to change the tone because, but, we need to make sure that our young people are informed of that, and we make sure that the teachers send the kids to that opportunity. They're going to have on-site housing for those that, we know transportation could be an issue, but there'll be on-site housing. I would think also that, um, maybe in the budgets that, or we can work with the county to get transportation so that we can have some daily runs, so that these young people can go and work and come back home if they can't stay on-site. So the bottom line is simply this, I don't want to change the topic too much, other than the fact that, uh, there's an opportunity to get our young people employed, so they're not out here in the streets this summer. And I would advocate that anyone with any power, whatever, make sure that the young people get that opportunity, get to interview, and get them hired. The information's in your school sit here, hopefully your young people brought it home to you. It's going to be from twelve to four, March fifteenth, Thursday, here at Lorraine High School. A show of hand, how many people in this room know there's going to be a job here next week? No, no, before, before I said anything. Okay, I got one, I got two, I got three. So, all this, all this, we need to make sure that our young people are informed, and we need to make sure we drive it down, make sure they understand that. From twelve o'clock to four o'clock, they're to sign up with their counselors, okay?
And they will hire them on the spot.
They will hire on the spot. There's a lack, I mean, our young people do not be in, be in the street. Right? Uh, anyway, so I'm not running for office, and I'm going to tell you right now, uh, thank you for adding the paper, because I probably wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for you guys. Alright?
Ms. Kimball, before you get up, let me, again, I, I meant to suspend a public hearing to get you up here, so I apologize for that, but, uh, you know, we certainly appreciate you being here. This is, uh, Ms. Brenda Kimball, uh, the, uh, president of the Youngstown Board of Ed, uh, who we've been in conversations with, so we're certainly happy to have you here. So, thank you.
Well, I, I just wanted to say, first of all, thanks for inviting me. I'm sorry I'm late, but I got lost.
Can't hear you.
Uh, I'm, I was listening to the different remarks, and I was listening to this young lady here say, uh, for the board members not to disappoint her, but with House Bill seventy, you can't disappoint the board, because the community has to get behind them to fight this off. This is a very dangerous House Bill that is basically created to take over public education and create charter schools. Uh, the first school district that it hit, of course, was Youngstown City Schools. The state was surprised that we're challenging that, they didn't expect us to. Uh, so of course, they're disappointed in us. We have a CEO, CEO Chris Mohit. He was brought into our school district through twenty fifteen, sixteen school year. Uh, I think you probably know how this House Bill was created, so I won't waste time, uh, speaking about that. But at this time, anybody that can come into your school district and have complete control of your school district, that's not a good thing, it's a dictatorship. And our district has proven to show that it is not good. When our CEO came into our school district, we were twenty-four million dollars in the black. We had been, uh, said to, we were going to be, or supposed to have been by twenty sixteen, forty-eight million dollars in the red, but the board itself turned that around. When we turned our district over to him, he had twenty-four million dollars. At this time, in less than a year and a half, we are eight point three million dollars over budgeted. Every month, we're spending out more than we take in. He has come into our district, and he has hired folks from Chicago, where he was from, who know nothing about the city of Youngstown. You know, you can have similar causes, but unless you're from that area, you don't know that area. These people were hired at well over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, probably at least thirty-five to forty people. A lot of these folks are, some of them have credentials as kindergarten teachers that are working as heads over all of our principals, they're called DOTS. He's created a lot of different, um, titles that we don't even know who they are or what they stand for. all of our principals. They're called DOTS. He's created a lot of different titles that we don't even know who they are or what they stand for. They restructured our school district from K through 8th grade. And it's a far stretch now. We don't have teachers, enough teachers to teach our children. He's removed from our children, banned strings, 3D printing, engineering. He's moved around our visual performing arts to our technical school that only now allows 11th and 12th graders to be a major part of it. There are so many changes that I can't even begin to tell you. Our teachers are working, 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 but because of how he's created, the structure of our school district is very difficult for them. We don't have enough special ed supports for our special ed students, so they're not being serviced. We just had the state come back in, I think yesterday, and they've sent us 16 more pages of what's wrong. Now, this is under one man who does not know our district, who was sent here from Chicago. When he left Chicago, he was over an elementary school building with 469 students. So how could you expect this man to know how to run a full school district? House Bill 70 is very dangerous. The only way that we can move this is with the help of the community and community groups. Get behind your board and support them and come to meetings like this. Call Columbus, call the state school board, talk to your members. We have a meeting tomorrow, March 6. We have two of the state school board members coming, District 11, is that your district?
That's me.
Merrill?
I'm coming.
Oh, you're coming, yeah. And then we have District 9 also coming. We have a lot of, we have Kevin, I'm sorry. I get upset when I talk about this because it's the worst thing that could ever happen. We needed help, but this is not the help that we needed. And the fact is, House Bill 70 gives no direction on honestly how to move academics forward. But it does give direction and a timeline on how to charter out your schools, which means it depletes your voters' rights for who runs your school district. It's gonna redirect your taxpayer dollars to private schools. It's just not a good house bill. And so we have to do something. We are working desperately. We're doing everything we can to move this house bill out of the way because it's just not right. Now, just yesterday, we had two of our academic distress commission members resign. They both resigned. That was Brian Banyo, the head, who was basically, I'll be very honest with you, blocking the board from having meetings with the full distress commission meeting, members, I'm sorry. And then Jennifer Roller resigned. She is the president of the Wing Foundation. Now, it's said that they resigned because they found out some information about our CEO that they were not happy with and I guess the governor does not want to move him, so they left. But it's not a good bill. Again, I'm not gonna take up all your time here talking about it. I'm just telling you, please get behind your board, rally, call, help them because these few people can't do it by themselves and frankly, they have no power. The people who you elected to look over your taxpayers' dollars have no power. And so there's not a whole lot they can do. You have more power than they do. And I'm just asking you, for your children, if you honestly care about your children and you want to support your teachers, you have to help us challenge this bill. It's not a good thing and it's not. Our children have no more than they had before our CEO came. He spends $6 million less in the classroom. The state didn't care. You know, we had bought all of our students iPads already because we want to do one-on-one technology. Then he turns around and buys 1,000 cell phones and give them out to the students. What do cell phones do? They distract students. They can't use them at home because the hotspot doesn't work. So what they're doing is in school is taking pictures of tests, texting their friends in the next room, calling their parents, telling them about the fights, things like that. So and then like we had a program, just to tell you about one program that they removed, we had LLI tutoring through Ohio State University. He moved that program that helped us. That's the reason why we moved 16 and 1/4 percent with our literacy scores. He moved that program and he put an article in the paper that he wanted parents to come and read to the students. So everything effective that we had in place that was helping us to move forward, he's torn apart and he's replaced that with things that are not gonna help our children move forward. So now not only is our academics are worse than they've ever been, our business is worse than it's ever been before too. So thank you. I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time, but please, I'm begging you, get behind your school board and push this out your way because we need your help. We have to work together on this. Thank you. Our meeting is tomorrow, short notice, but anybody who can come, please come. It's the 6th, which is tomorrow, 5:30 PM. It's gonna be held at 1507 Hillman Street. That's New Bethel Baptist Church, Young Sanctuary, Youngstown, Ohio, 4450 Center. Yeah, anybody, please, who can come, please come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Josh, real quick, so I don't know, how much money do we lose sending to the charter schools?
About a third, about 3,000, or about, yeah, it's about a third.
A third?
Yeah, a third of our students go out to charter and open enrollment.
Okay, but like dollar amount, it's how many millions do you think that we lose because of that? 15 million, 17 million? 22 million?
62, 61, 50 a kid, so we figure about 3,000. It's up there.
3,000 what, a child? How much a child do we lose?
It's roughly about 22 million.
22 million. So really, that's 22 million that we should have in our budget. We probably would have to save a school levy. Right?
Please, I'm sorry about that.
My name is Dylan Johnson. I'm a local pastor of the Fairfield Christian Center for about 28 years in the city. Also been the director of Faith House Academy. So I have a hands-on approach with the children. In 2002, Bill, if you remember, when we was at the CHIPS debate, I predicted that this would happen as I ran for a candidate. House Bill 70 has literally stripped the power from this board. And the state is not going to give it back. Fighting within the House is not gonna change anything. In November, there's gonna be elections. And from the governor on down, state representatives, all those who want to do this one thing, get richer. Because the key word to this is privatize. 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 Privatize jails. Privatize schools.
Privatize turf.
Privatize health. I've also predicted that it won't be long that you won't be able to go out of your house and not pay a toll from there to the nearest house. I picked up a Time Magazine, Martin Luther King Jr., 50 years later. I just got to reading the Kerners Report. 50 years later, minorities, particularly African-Americans, the Kerners Report states, is in worse conditions economically, education, and morally. And it's all centered around education, the lack of it, good education. So I want to say to the board and everybody here, if you're gonna stop this, shut it down, you're gonna have to do it at the ballot box. You're gonna have to organize. And all those who want to make the rich richer that were elected to serve you but are serving themselves, you're gonna have to vote them out. Now, a lot of people are one-issue voters. And that one issue might have caused this issue. But the greatest issue that we can deal with in this life is the issue of our children. I want to say one more thing. I read an article, right now, in most airports. You can walk into an airport store, pick up that bottle of water and walk out. Don't stop at the cashier. You pick it up and walk out. Technology has built that bottle of water to your account without a cashier. So what is that? That means that millions and millions or more people will not have jobs. Since I'm a preacher, let me put a scripture in you. The Bible says that in the last days, man should become wickeder and wiser. And this is what's happened. We are literally in this country digging our own ditch and somebody else is gonna cover it up. Somebody, if we don't wake up and understand that our priorities have been turned upside down and inside out. It's time to break up the clubs, the cliques, and be about business. In Michigan, a CEO came in, took over the city. There was nothing nobody can do about it. You will not stop this focusing on the CEO. He's got a bull dog and nasty to do what he was sent to do.
Amen.
But you can reverse the order from the state house, from the state house. And that's gonna take all of us working together. God bless you. I just felt, I think it's kinda high, staying out of the way. But I just felt compelled to come out tonight and say my little piece because we are living in some rough times from Washington DC on down. And what's in your heart will show up in your actions. What's in your heart will show up in your actions. I say this all the time, it's not about me, it's about us. Because without me, there's no us.